Good morning and welcome to the Sheriff's County Commission Meeting. Today is Thursday, August 5th, 2021. We'll first start off by saying that legislation.
Legislation to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hey, approval of the minutes, July 15th, 2021. Are there any objections? Here none, they are approved for the minutes for July 28th, 2021. Are there any objections here? None, those are approved. Approval requisitions for August 5th, 2021. If there are no objections, amount of $206,833.76 approved. With approval of accounts payable for July 22nd, 2021, an amount of $371,971.89. If there are no objections, that is approved. Under accounts approval, accounts payable for July 29th, 2021, is an amount of $134,265.64. If there are no objections, that is approved. For the August 5th, 2021, accounts payable in the amount of $201,256.95. If there are no objections, that is approved. With approval of manual checks from July 23rd, 2021, for the amount of $12,678.59. If there are no objections, that is approved. Under manual checks for July 30th, 2021, an amount of $9,300. If there are no objections, that is approved. Manual checks August 6th, 2021, an amount of $2,461.23. If there are no objections, that is approved. For payroll on July 22nd, 2021, an amount of $262,703.1. If there are no objections, that is approved. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our first gen item. 9:35. Angie Banks, her assessor, and I believe she is probably online. Good morning. Come on up.
I decided to come in first and I was like, this won't be that so bad.
Very proud.
So I knew you would have to.
Very proud. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Okay, well, as you know, the tax bills have all gone out. I had several disonerations. Several of them are vehicles that they just reported the wrong vehicle. So we ended up making them a new one. So I just wanted to explain that. Okay. The first one is Charlestown District in our 2021 Personal Property Book. The applicant is Far Nicole Jordan and Nancy. Ticket number 300569. They did not have the 2016 Volkswagen involved July 1st, 2020. The assessed value was $6,200, tax amount $150.61.
I move the approval exoneration ticket number 300569 is presented by the assessor.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries your answer. Thank you.
Okay, this next one is in our 2021 Personal Property Book. Charlestown District. Taxpayer did not own the 2000 Volvo B70 July 1st, 2020. And they did not own the 2008 Volkswagen Greta, July 1st, 2020. Assessed value $2,000. Total amount of taxes is $48.58. The applicant is, the last name, I'm not sure if I'm saying this correctly. Correctly, it looks like B-U-E-D-E. Paul and Jessica. Ticket number 300853.
I'll move approval of exoneration ticket number 300853 is presented by the assessor.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries.
This one's in our 2021 Personal Property Book, Middleway District. So the 2010 Ford Expedition and the '05 Ford F-150 were traded in for another vehicle July 1st, 2020. Assessed value $2,550. Tax amount $133.60. Applicant is Joyce Kramer. Ticket number 311875.
I'll move approval of exoneration ticket number 311875 is presented by the assessor.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
This is in our 2021 Personal Property Book, Charlestown District. Taxpayer was assessed for a 2005 Toyota Camry. This should have been assessed for the '05 Subaru Legacy. Assessed value is $1,400, tax amount $40.90. Taxpayer is Daniel Brown. Ticket number 305371.
You want to roll, Jane?
Ask Caleb to step onto the plate.
Movement through the exoneration ticket number 305371.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
This is in our 2021 Personal Property Book, Cabletown District. Taxpayer had a rental state before July 1st, 2020. They were assessed for the 2017 Chevy Sonic. Assessed value $4,200. Tax amount $102.04. The applicant's name is Philip Del Gallo. Ticket number 309889.
Thank you.
Movement approval of exoneration for ticket number 309889. Outline by the assessor.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
This is in our 2021 Personal Property Book, Charlestown District. The taxpayer did not own the 2013 Yamaha, July 1st, 2020. Assessed value $2,600, tax amount $63.60. The taxpayer's name is Timothy Farling. Ticket number 301573.
I'm approval of exoneration ticket number 301573 is presented by the assessor.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries.
This one is in our 2021 Personal Property Book, Middleway District. Taxpayer did not own the 2016 GMC Yukon as of July 1st, 2020. Assessed value $19,100, tax amount $463.98. The applicant has now huge events. Ticket number 312400.
I'm approval of exoneration is presented by the assessor. Ticket number 312400.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
This next one's in our 2021 Personal Property Book, Carpers Ferry District. The 2006 Harley motorcycle was sold July 1st, before July 1st, 2020. Assessed value $2,000, tax amount $48.58. The applicant is Michael Stoneberger. Ticket number 308840.
Move to approval of exoneration ticket number 308840. Outline by the assessor.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries.
This one is in our 2021 Personal Property Book, Carpers Ferry District. The applicant did not have the 2012 Toyota or the 2018 Polaris. Assessed value $7,800, tax amount $189.04. They did not have them July 1st, 2020. The applicant is Jeremy Alderidge. Ticket number 30836.
3089.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Okay, this was in our 2021 Real Estate Book, Charlestown District. We had this part of the assessed for business and there was not a business there July 1st, 2020. So all of it should have been assessed in class two. So that portion, the assessed value was $11,850. The tax amount is $143.93. The applicant is Alice Chapman. Ticket number 1579.
Just 1579?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's a real estate ticket.
Okay. I thought you were missing.
Yes, yeah, sometimes I have to look at that.
All right, I'll move to take number 1579. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Okay, this last one is not an exoneration. It's to split the taxes due to a divorce. To split the personal property. Ticket number 315612. The first applicant is Mark Pupazella. He was awarded the '08 Toyota Prius. Assessed value $1,800. Tax amount for his part is $43.74. The other applicant is Roberta Di Biassi. She was awarded the 2017 BMW. Assessed value $11,100. Firm portion is $269.64.
Name and ticket number?
Yes.
Okay, I'm moving to ticket number 315612. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to gen item number two. Debbie Knows, Sheriff's Office, 2021 Annual Sharing Agreement Certification Report. The floor is yours. You have Mr. Holtz.
Can I help you with anything?
Yes.
My backup. Good morning, commissioners. One of my duties is the oversight of the Justice Treasury Culture Account. This account receives funds from accounts that were, cases that were prosecuted federally and funds were forfeited. So these funds are for the benefit of the Sheriff's Office, but also the Eastern Panhandle Road and Violent Crimes Passports. Commissioner Hudson Tab will probably remember that we entered into an agreement with them to become their fiduciary. So one of the requirements to be eligible to receive these funds is that annually I submit this report. And it is the Equitable Sharing Agreement Certification Report. It is basically an accounting to the federal government to say, these are the funds we received, this is the interest we made on the funds we received, and this is how we spend your money. So I'm happy to go over the report if you would like, but you all received a copy of it. The copy that I submitted with the agenda did have a typo for our budget. I don't know how I did that. It was really hard. But it should say that our FY '22 budget is $3,448,644. In the correct copy that I sent you guys does say that.
Does the commissioners have any questions? Hearing none. You just need a motion to approve.
So, yeah, they did, sorry. They did kind of change. So the years passed. It used to be that I just put the sheriff's name and his contact information and the commission president's name and their contact information. Last year, they added a little certification clause. You'll remember that stated, yep, that's their budget and we're all going to play nice and follow the rules. This year, they tagged on the guidance that said, I needed to come to you guys and have you designate the person to be listed as the governing body head. So historically, it has been the commission president that be listed as the governing body head. So I am requesting that we designate Commissioner Stoller as the governing body head for the purposes of this report and allow me to fix this name digitally and check the little mark that says that's the budget and we'll follow.
Okay. So would somebody like to move a motion to express that request?
I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Stoller as the governing body head for the second sharing agreement.
We have a second. All right, any discussion?
Yeah, just add to the motion to allow her to electronic sign.
Okay. Okay, with the motion, it's amended and due to allow us to electronic sign. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all. All right, next we have engine item number three. Painter, County clerk's office.
Good morning. So I, you all should have a copy of the redistricting overview. Stephanie thought it would be a good idea if I came before you just to kind of give you a brief overview of what actually is coming up this year. So what is redistricting first? I think Commissioner Tab is the only commissioner that has been through an actual redistricting. And I have been through one, however, that was 10 years ago. So it'll be like a new process again. But first, what is redistricting? It's the redrawing of congressional and other legislative district lines following the census to accommodate population shifts and keep districts as equal as possible in population. Some of the things that we do know that are going to occur with this redistricting, because the census data has not been released yet, but we already know that the second congressional district will be absorbed into the remaining two districts. So we will go down to two districts total. There are 51 house districts with 20 of them being multiple member districts. While this doesn't affect us because we don't have the multi-member districts, all of those lines will have to be changed, redrawn. So it could eventually cycle out to us, but I don't know that that will have a direct impact on us. The census data is usually released in April. Or well past April. They do not even expect the county level, which is like the low level data, to be released until the end of August. With the final detailed data is going to be released about September 30th. That puts us on an extremely tight timeline because once the state gets theirs, they have to do the upper levels. So that has to occur first with the congressional, state senate, and house delegate districts. Once they finish their part of it, they distribute that out to the counties and then we have to make our lines fit within their lines. So the county commission is in charge of redrawing the magisterial districts and the precincts. And again, we have to make our stuff fit with what they give us. So we really cannot start the process until we get the information from the state. The reason that it's such a tight timeline, we have an election coming up next year. There are residential requirements. Some require you to have to live within a district for an entire year. Now, that year would be November, not the primary election, but the November election. But if you delay the process too much, you can certainly get into trouble where someone might have to challenge it in court as far as their residency is concerned. So once the state issues theirs, you all are going to be on a really quick and tight timeline to get your part of it done. Now, in the past, Todd Fakin from the GIS and Addressing Office, he was a tremendous source in this because he can translate that census data. He puts it into maps. He can overlay it with our current lines. And he can present maps to you all to say, this is how everything is equal. You all can decide whether you want to adjust lines, move lines. But he does make the process a lot easier.
Better than the paper man.
Exactly, yeah. So during the last redistricting, I looked at the previous redistricting. So it would have been two ago. And they used maps.
Right.
And, yes. And there were markers and colored pencils. I mean, that's what you had. So I mean, that's what you had to use. Thankfully, we don't have to do that.
And try and define, you know, railroads or roads to be downed.
So correct. Correct. Because you all have to use the census blocks as you're determining where a line goes. Which again, where Todd comes in, he can translate all of that for you. He is going to reach out to Delegate Espinoza because he's on the redistricting committee in the past. And you all may have heard complaints. I'm not sure. I know the previous commissions have. We do have developments, like housing developments, where they are completely split. And they were split at the state level. So when we got them, there was nothing that we could do. Gapview is one of them. That line actually cuts through a house. So we had to determine what side of the house, you know, which line we were going to put the entire house in. So.
And Todd had offered in the past to reach out to the state. And that's what he was going to do. And I'm very lucky that we had to. There are many counties that do. So if you, I can tell him, try to work with the state that we don't have a line through a house. And he does try to keep subdivisions together too. Or recommend that they.
And I know, and I don't want to speak out of turn for him, but I know that he did reach out to the census bureau to give them, because they were using old data. So the one that splits Gapview, that census line was a drainage ditch in a farmer field. Well, that is no longer a farmer's field. That's a development. So they used a bad line. So he did reach out to the state after the last one to say, hey, these are bad lines. Let's try to correct that data. I'm not sure where he got with that, but I know he did at least make that attempt to try to get them to use good lines. There are going to be public hearings held across the state. The local one, I did give you that information, is August 17th. It's going to be at the Martinsburg Sheriff's Office Meeting Room. Doors open at 5:30 PM and the meeting is scheduled 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So it is a public hearing. I believe they are going to give out information on how the redistricting works at the state level. I'm not sure what all they're going to talk about, how long they're going to get. But it is a time for the public to be heard. So it is open. So if anybody has any questions, this is going to be a big process. And I realize I'm just kind of giving you an overview. We really won't know anything until we start getting the data.
Do you know how of our magistrate districts are as far as population right now? Okay, so you don't know?
We have not received any information at all. That's the information that they think is going to be released at the end of August.
Okay.
So we should know something. As soon as I know something, I can certainly get back on the agenda to give you what information we do receive.
What is the, how close do we get to? Get all five districts within?
There's a percentage.
I was going to say, yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember off the top of my head what the exact percentage is, but there is a percentage. There isn't a set number in code because you just have to make sure that your population is equal within a certain percentage. And I can't remember what the exact percentage is.
Okay. All right. Is anybody else have any question? No, there you go. Thank you very much.
All right.
Next, we have Lynn Fields, Probate Office. She online?
She's on.
Okay.
I am. Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good morning. I'm here from the probate office to present to you the resignation as fiduciary commissioner of David De Jarnett. And then to hopefully get approved Ralph Lorenzetti as fiduciary commissioner in his place. Mr. De Jarnett's letter and Mr. Lorenzetti's letter should be, you all should have a copy of both of those. Mr. De Jarnett is tendering his resignation from the position as fiduciary commissioner for Jefferson County effective immediately. Karen and I researched the files and Mr. De Jarnett has approximately four open estates left to finish. And in his letter, he does state that he will continue to supervise and tend to those matters to which he's currently assigned. So he does expect to complete those four open estates before and not accept any new estates. So with him resigning, there is an opening left that we need to fill. Mr. Lorenzetti is a likely candidate for that. He served as fiduciary commissioner previously and also was a reference for us in the probate office as he, when he worked for the prosecuting attorney. So we would just ask that you would accept Mr. De Jarnett's resignation and also accept the appointment of Mr. Lorenzetti as fiduciary commissioner.
Does anybody have any questions? I'll move to accept the resignation of D. De Jarnett. And we'll accept the application for Mr. Ralph Lorenzetti. Do you have a second? It's been properly moved to second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. All right. Motion carries. You can answer. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you so much. Thanks, have a good day.
Yes, ma'am. All right, next is Dennis Jarvis, Judge County Development Authority. Development Authority requests permission to hire program manager candidate and requests permission to advertise for the position. I know she assists. No, I'm sorry. And we also have our, the chairman.
Good morning, commissioners.
And move yourself.
My name is Sean Pejo. I'm the newly elected president of the JCDA Board.
Welcome.
Thank you, Dennis Jarvis. It's nice to be here with you all in person. Thank you. Appreciate you taking your time. And welcome. We've not had to meet, so I appreciate you. So it's my turn.
The floor is yours.
Yeah, this is all new. This is not passe. This was since like 2019. I used to be in person with you all. We came to you a month ago asking for an opportunity to post the position for the office that had been vacated with the resignation of Lynn Goodwin. Lynn had been on staff since 2015 as program manager. She has now moved on to, in the region, working in Morgan County. It's a great collaboration for us regionally having someone with a knowledge base of Jefferson. And we work in regional contexts. But we came to you all, asked for two items. Our admin was working towards a, both duties. They caused short staff on projects we had. And secondarily, primarily, we asked for permission and position. I'm pleased to tell you that we appreciate that. We did. We had three qualified candidates. We conducted interviews. And our recommendation from executive committee and from staff and director is we hire Krista Hoffman to replace the vacant position. I had a memo, I should have given it to you all, but we can make copies and get back to you all. Secondarily, we're asking to seek permission to host the new, the open admin position. And we'd like to make those both effective Monday, August 9th. There's not a, we've had a conversation with the county administrator. We've had a conversation with Michelle. We, we need to get to a middle row on salaries, I'll be honest. The current, Lynn was hired five years ago at a salary of $42,500. When she retired, the position had a salary of $49,176. So what we have budgeted for the year is that line item amount. I'm asking for the new position for the person we've recommended for Krista to be hired at a rate of $43.8. That's commensurate with the position. It's commensurate with her experience. It's in line with the position was hired seven years ago. And it's, as I say, budget neutral. We're not asking for any more funds. We're actually saving the county some funding there because of not going to any max salary. This is a, the question has been raised, you know, the question is, question about this is, you know, the skill set. And I think Krista has demonstrated. She came into a job interview, didn't tell us she was applying. Came into a job interview, had a presentation, talked about business retention, talked about marketing. She's been a business owner in the county for 20 years. She has management experience, payroll experience, working with supply chain, with all the necessary facets, skill set that the position requires. skill set that the position requires. She's been hands-on since day one, and I feel that it's a high value. I think it's high value for the county, it's high value for the office to continue that relationship and expand her capabilities. And if you look at companion offices in the region, I think that we're companion with like Berkeley County, for example, they have five full-time staff members and a full-time administrative assistants. So as I said, we're not asking you for, we're not coming to you in this time that unknown and the eight ball of life, we don't know what may or may not happen on fiduciary side, but I'm hopeful that you concur with us. And I can answer any questions.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Wasn't she doing some of the responsibilities of program manager, and you've come previously and asked for adjustment?
Yes ma'am, yes.
So she's already been doing some of that.
Yes ma'am, and that was in the interim period. Let me give you, for example, this week, we have six, this is why I was incumbent to compensate and then and do things. She's doing business retention business while we're doing attraction and market. That's a position I really love as a director. But we have six closings for the industrial park this week. And I know that's not germane, or it's not what we're talking about, but there is a high-level activity, and she has been a great resource.
And it is Krista or Kristen?
Krista Hoffman, yes ma'am.
Michelle, I have to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that I did speak with Dennis Jarvis several times regarding the salary, and based on Ms. Hoffman's experience, you know, I don't have an issue with, you know, salary. Typically, when you have a lateral transfer like that, the increase should only be three to five percent. This is actually 16% of nothing, but based on her experience, I'm not having any issues. The other thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, in looking at this case, and previous new hires, we have several long-term employees who are in the same grade or similar grades, where they've been here long enough that they've worked through the time where the commission wasn't giving any increases at all. So we're starting to experience some pay equity issues with some of our long-term employees who have similar experience. That's something we'll probably bring them forward commission as part of this week, free budget. I just kind of want to give you heads up on that.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I do. So, I just want to make sure I understand the situation. Krista, Ms. Hoffman, was hired as your administrative assistant?
Yes ma'am.
And so she's moving up to another level as a program manager. So are you going to re-advertise for the administrative assistant?
Yes ma'am, that's what I'd like to ask, and you know, I appreciate Michelle, the good conversation you've had back and forth. Krista is in class this week, literally today, at UNC, doing a basic education, a basic economic development course. We have the ability to get her a certification in business retention, where she'd be one of only two in the state to have that certification. So she is a great asset to this agency, and I appreciate Michelle and Stephanie for the dollar we've had back and forth.
Well, I've had, you know, interaction, slight with Ms. Hoffman in her previous role with Roche. I call it box act, but it's not the name of it, but anyway, I found her somebody very competent.
Yes ma'am.
And I'm just wanting to confirm, so she's currently on as program manager, $43,800.
Yes ma'am.
I'm going to make the motion to move Ms. Krista Hoffman into the program manager position at a salary of $43,800, effective Monday, August 9, and to subsequently advertise for the administrative assistant position that is now open due to her departure of that, effective Monday, obviously.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries, you can answer, thank you.
Thank you so much for saying that, well, Michelle, have a great day.
All right. Ahead is good, but Michelle's here, so come on up. And so you have, you get plenty of time.
I was going to say.
We have around a half hour ahead schedule.
No, I don't talk.
I'll try to take out the slack for you.
Oh, yeah.
I'm pretty sure he'll be fine. All right. Yeah. The first thing that I have on my agenda is review of the fiscal year '21 budget to actual as of June 30, 2021. And this is preliminary, I still have until the middle of October to prepare the financial statements. So I have a number of revenue checks that we haven't received, and I do some of quote entry, journal entries for the month of August and September. So these numbers will change, I'll bring them back to you in October when I have the final numbers. The first report in the financial review is our cash balances as of June 30, 2021. The total cash balances as of June 30, 2021 were $32.7 million compared to $17.8 million at the end of fiscal year '20. So 14 points, about a $15 million increase. The primary reasons for this increase are the American Rescue Plan Act and the CARES Act revenue that we received in fiscal year '20 and '21. So you can see that our general fund balance is about $7.1 million cash balance compared to $6.9 million. At the same time, that shares are in a good position going into the new fiscal year to ensure that we're able to pay our operating expenses until we start receiving our tax revenue, with the bulk of that coming in during the first quarter of the fiscal year each year. State grants revenue looks a little odd with a negative cash balance of $7,000, that's not unusual. We are required to pay for those before we get reimbursed for those. So we did receive a $10,000 check in July, so that balance did correct itself in July. The other large cash balances would be our American Rescue Plan Act. We have, in fund two, we have $4 million up in that fund, we originally received $5.5 million, we transferred $1.5 million to that out into our account. During fiscal year '21, we were able to make transfers through capital outlay fund and increased that balance from $4.1 million to $12 million. At the end of fiscal year '21, we have $12 million of cash available in the capital outlay fund. We're required to have a minimum fund balance of $2 million. So of that $12 million, approximately $10 million, this is spendable. We do have projects in the works and already committed to the team, about $2 million. So there's probably $8 million left in that one, available for future projects. Any questions about any cash balances this year? The next two pages are expenditures by department. Our add the lawn taxes, at the end of June 30, we receive $14.7 million. That's about $251,000 under our budget of $14.9 million, that's not unusual. We typically have a difference of about $300,000 to $400,000 every year, it's due to delinquent accounts, and they'll be paid in future years. But if you look, if you compare that to June 30th, 2020 balance, we are actually at an increase of $320,000. So we typically realize an increase in our tax revenue of $200,000 to $400,000 annually. Ambulance fees is the next line item. We recorded an income contribution to the all-star department of $979,000 in fiscal year '21 compared to $916,000 of fiscal year '20, and that's based on their 990 financial statements. Building permit revenue came in at $510,000 at the end of fiscal year '21. It's about $33,000 of a budget, and it's an actual increase of about 24% over prior fiscal year. So the current trend for building permit revenue and transfers due to the current economy for real estate, or the market for real estate right now, has actually turned it up. Our 911 emergency fees, looks like it's under budget right now at $1.9 million, and that budget was $2.5 million. That's a fee that we receive on quarterly basis, and we don't receive the last quarter payment until August or September. So I'll have one more entry to record for that before we're finished with financial statements. Not concerned, at that point, I anticipated we'll come in real close to budget. Federal grants revenue, we received $3.1 million of federal grants revenue this year '21, $1.5 million of that was from the RPA Act, and the remainder of that was primarily from CARES Act revenue. That is a decrease over the prior fiscal year of about 19%. And last year's grant revenue was also primarily resolved with CARES Act funding. Our franchise agreements is $13,000, and again, that's another one that appears to be under budget, but it's not because it's a quarterly payment, we normally receive that last quarter payment in July or August. So I'll have one more record, journal entry to record for that. Hotel occupancy tax is trending lower than I had originally thought. That $153,000 for fiscal year '21, I am going to reach out to the sheriff's department. When I looked at July revenues, it's is lower than our 2019 revenues that we received, and it really should be at least what we received in 2019. So I'm going to reach out to the sheriff's department to try to get a better accounting of that. They typically provide me with a report based on each hotel, so that I can do an analysis of that.
I have a couple common objects, and complaints from citizens about short-term rentals, like people in and out of, even a residential homes, not hotels or rentals, vacation spots, and, you know. How, you have to register everything, if you have a short-term rental, not even forced to make sure that paying hotel notes are there.
You go, if you want to.
No, you go ahead. We've been going.
Yeah. You have a duty to short-term rentals, so if you remember the legislation, Airbnb doesn't collect the local tax. And so if I'm the owner of a short-term rental right now, to, on the honor system, to collect that tax. And it does put them in a bad spot, because Airbnb said, this is what you owe, and then the short-term rental said, and offer this, because they're trying to collect the local tax.
Well, I don't think they're even trying to.
Well, that is, and some people are very good about it, and some people are not, but it's, so on January 1st, 2022, Airbnb has to be, all facilitators, not Airbnb, they're, they're the most famous one, but there are others. They have to be wired to collect the local taxes as part of their platform. So they will start adding that in.
January, yeah.
Yeah. I talked to Annette Gavin on Tuesday of this week, and she indicated that she, that they had told her they were going to try to get one in October, so that they knew that they weren't complying with January 1st. On the other end, the planning, zoning side, we don't know if things are short-term rentals, and it's almost impossible to find out unless, you know, you have a neighbor who says, I think this might be a short-term rental. And I have to try to find out if something's a short-term rental yesterday, eight, about an ambulance fee. And I'm like, oh, it's just a detached thing.
Yeah.
But then when I looked at the assessor's intervention, it had all of the amenities of a rental. But they won't give you the address until you start to book it. So there was a time when Annette was trying to figure out who was an Airbnb and try to, you know, get some enforcement going on them, but it's difficult to find out where they are because the address isn't listed. It just says, you know, if you look in Shepherdstown, it just says Airbnb.
What if folks know apartments are being rented out? I mean, in the neighborhood, I mean, they.
Yeah, and I think they are.
Who do they report it to?
They have reported it to Rogers Office or Inflating Zone. And I think we're going to have to look at our ordinances, because I think our ordinances did not contemplate at the time, anything like Airbnb. So, and that there are, there are several of them throughout the county, you have to go on and you try to book something. So, right now, I think they reached out to Nathan and I tried to schedule a meeting with the CSE. Are they in violation? Are they consistent with our ordinances? And do we need to address them better in our ordinances? Yes. And that's, obviously, it's not a mission, well, I guess it's our condition.
So imagine, because I know, we've seen a couple, and we've heard, at least, of Airbnbs and that's reception term rentals because of either a nuisance or trespass or something of that nature. So I mean, I'm assuming that's what the complaints are about, is some type of violation to the neighbor's property, or nuisance of a dog, cat, or what.
Right, or a party all night. And parking, I mean, it's, home with maybe two parking spaces, and you've got all your friends over there, and they just jam up the roads.
And there may be implications in the infrastructure on how those properties are taxed as well. So, and I don't know.
But we don't have a solid enforcement framework right now.
No.
And it sounds like we need to work on.
So are you saying, January though, Airbnb platform is going to start? And then, yes, it will solve some of our problems, because we'll know, but I think we still need to address it on the other side, in our ordinances, to look, are they not restrictive enough? Or are they too restrictive? Because we, it's, it's not something we contemplated with the ordinance.
And you know, is it just Airbnb, or is it like VRPO?
It's across the board, I'm using Airbnb because I think they're the, they're the one everybody knows, but any market facilitator starting on January 1st, 2022, will be responsible for collecting the local taxes with the platform. And just to give you an idea, when this data was gone, so this legislation has been going state by state, as more states are saying, hey, we're missing out on all this hotel, motel room. In Wisconsin, they collected double. What they estimated that they would collect in Wisconsin. So I mean, because more people are using that as, you know, rather than saying, well, they're writing for something that had a little bit more minutes or something like that, so. But yeah, January 1st, 2022, that will solve some of our problems, right? Enforcement and kind of knowing who has an Airbnb, but I think we're still going to have to look at it on the land use side as well, to see how our ordinances address it, because I don't think, whether you want it to be more restrictive or less restrictive, I just don't think the ordinances do a good job, because it wasn't something that was contemplated at the time. It's a, you know, it's a relatively new format.
Yeah, I talked to Alex yesterday, or, yeah, I think it was yesterday, at the planning office, and she, she hopes to have a draft to the planning commission of the Airbnb, VRPO, short-term rental in September.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we got way late, but I was just thinking. How do you get those numbers up, you know, in public, because we know it's happening.
Right, and we have lost inventory, we lost two hotel rooms, two not rooms.
Yeah, right.
Two hotels in Shepherdstown. And I think that the track is still not able to run, to, to run out of capacity because of staffing issues. But, I mean, we should still be up higher in July than we are.
And if the Hilltop comes online, it's going to pay more in, in the tax than, in all of them. That's my understanding, so.
It was spoken, homie.
It's, yeah.
I think it'll be tall, and I think it'll be too.
I'm sure somebody ran some programs for them, jumped a thousand, a hundred million in there, I would think they would.
I've heard that in work. The next revenue that I wanted to point out would be our property transfer tax. We received $1.367 million in fiscal year '21, our budget was $1.4 million. I still have one more journal entry to report for the month of June. So I anticipate that it's going to be where our original budget was. Regardless, it is still over the prior year's revenue of $1.4 million. Also not charging the max rate for the property transfer tax that we can. And I believe that legislation just started, or is about to start, where the state is going to forego their property transfer tax, meaning that the amount that they normally would collect will be now, will now become part of the county's property transfer tax. So we should see our property transfer tax increase exponentially by $5 million, or a million to maybe a million and a half over the next 10 years, it's going to be phased in, 10% per year, will be allocated back to the counties through, until we get to 100% in 10 years. So we're going to see that increase as well, from that. Table games revenue, video lottery revenue, all who are at the end, I normally do. So revenues at the end of fiscal year '21 were $28.5 million compared to $27.6 million at the end of fiscal year '20, and that is due entirely to the amount of revenue that we received. We did still see a 3% increase in our revenues for fiscal year '21. And I will bring to you in January, the ARPA loss revenue from the calendar of 2021. So we'll have that revenue to look forward to, to approve later this fiscal year. When I look at expenditures by department, I saw the circuit clerk's office was over budgeted by about $3,000. That's primarily due to the fact that I still have to do one more entry for, every time with the health insurance, we transferred that out to a separate fund. So if you look down on the next page, we do have our health insurance programs for '23. I haven't done that final entry for June, so that, that should correct our budget. Animal control, when I look at theirs, they're over budgeted by about $5,000. I still have about $3,000 to transfer out to the insurance program. So they are actually over budgeted for the year by about $2,000, and it's primarily attributed to their overtime being.
And it's primarily attributed to their overtime being over budgeted by $2,000.
The sheriff's earnings, actually in the breakdown above, what's in that?
That is where they, we would deposit their revenue that they receive for security services and a few other things, but primarily from security services. So as a result of COVID, they weren't able to do a lot of security services. It's my understanding that they were going to do away with it.
I was just curious, because we have the service of process.
Yeah, the service of process is different. And service of process is actually a dedicated revenue. The sheriff must use, they typically use it for uniforms, but it's dedicated to the sheriff's office and they're required to use that. Parks and Rec, Parks and Communities, Historical Commission, and Visitor Bureau are over budgeted primarily because in June, if you recall, I did that loss revenue calculation and distributed funding to them. And we were required by state, the state auditor's office requires to have all budget revisions done in May. So because we didn't do that transfer until June, we were required to get a budget revision done for that. So unfortunately, they are over budgeted as a result of the grant revenue that we received. So expenditures were 25.1 million compared to 24.4 million for the prior fiscal year. The primary reason for the increase, one has to do with the ARPA grant funding that we transferred out to those four organizations as well as the amount of COVID-related expenditures that we had during this fiscal year. Transfers to and from other funds, I transferred $8 million to the Capital Outlay Fund in fiscal year 21. It's the largest transfer there. Transfers from other funds, we received $1.5 million from our ARPA for our loss revenue. That transfer was on the end of the fiscal year. And then the assessor's valuation transfer of 509,000 of the assessor does for University County for approximately 50% of our salaries and wages and benefits for about 50% of employees. And we're very appreciative that the assessor uses her funds in that manner. So. Right, beginning fund balance at the beginning of fiscal year 21 was 9.9 million. And that gives the funds of 2.4 million primarily due to our transfers to the Capital Outlay Fund. Our ending fund balance was 7.4 million. Our fund balance as a percent of operating expenditures at the end of fiscal year 21 is about 29% for about three and a half months operating expenditures. That is a good operating indicator for a management school that we should use to ensure that we are able to pay for our expenditures should we have a decrease in revenue and should we have that seasonal fluctuation in experience for tax revenue. State code does require that we have a minimum fund balance of 10% of our operating expenditures. Our county policy is higher than that. Our county policy requires 16.67% with a goal of 20%. So we are within our county policy, state code, and our goal. Any excess amount will be transferred to the Capital Outlay Fund prior fiscal, in the next fiscal year in accordance with their financial policies. The next page shows a different representation of our expenditures as the expenditures by object. And you can see our health insurance for personnel expenditures. I didn't really see anything unusual in the revenues that I have already logged over. If you look at our expenditures for health insurance, you can see what I mentioned earlier. I haven't done that final month's transfer to the insurance fund. Additionally, we received a premium credit in December of about $165,000. So that has resulted in our health insurance expense being under budget. Court costs and damages isn't something that we normally budget for. We are not able to anticipate when we receive them. A lot of times when we receive our court costs and damages, it's for incidents or accidents that happened four or five years ago. So we're not able to budget for that typically. So that went over budgeted by about $10,000 or about $4,000. Postage, so that one more year in entry, accrual entry for prepaid postage. So that should typically bring that back down to where it's within budget. And then you can also see that due to the COVID-related financial policies that were implemented throughout the entire fiscal year, our training and travel expenditures are significantly under budget and significantly lower than they were prior fiscal year. On the next page, our JOP, that is the full year of expenditures, 674,000 is the lowest I have ever seen. Yeah. So it was under budgeted by about 375,000. We did budget fiscal year for 850,000 for fiscal year 22. So I believe that our budget for fiscal year 22 should be okay. Uniforms for the year totaled 41,858 and our budget was only 833,000. That is due primarily to new employees that were hired in the sheriff's office during fiscal year 21. Contributions to other agencies, our largest expense for contributions to other agencies would be to our JCESA at 2.7 million. The second largest expense would be 1.6 million in transfers to volunteer fire departments and then 450,000 to our headcount and tax. And it is over budgeted by 255,000 and that's because of that last minute transfer I did during June. Transfers out, we had $8 million transferred out to our Capital Outlay Fund. And then the other transfers in, we received 1.6 million from the ARPA funds. And that accounts for the fact that it's over budget. We receive more than we typically do. Have any questions about any of the expenditures by object? Expenditures by funding source, I included that for your reference. Hand it over anything in there unless you have any questions. Table games revenue, at the end of fiscal year 21, we received 447,000 in table games revenue compared to 508,000 the prior year. So it was a 10.7% decrease. For fiscal year 22, we have budgeted 365,000. I don't anticipate that we will need to revise that budget at this point, but we'll revisit that in January. I'm surprised it's not decreasing. Right, now, when I looked at the pre-COVID year for revenue, it is still 72% down compared to the regular year. So it has not recovered table games revenue. It's not a large revenue source, but it has not recovered. Our video lottery revenue, we received 2.5 million in revenue in fiscal year 21 compared to 2.48 million in fiscal year 20. So it was a 4.1% increase over the prior year. I budgeted further decreases in fiscal year 22 of 2.5 million. I anticipate that we will need to increase that by $2,400,000. And I'll bring that back to you in January once we have a better picture. I also did look at the pre-COVID year revenue. And when you look at the pre-COVID year revenue, it's down about 15% compared to what was prior to the pandemic. But it's, it's up over last year's revenue. And that's everything that I have for the fiscal year 21 preliminary budgets actual. Do you have any questions? Okay, so that leaves us into the next two budget revisions that were required to be by state code. First one is state budget revision number one for the general fund. We're required to do a budget revision to change our beginning fund balance to ensure that it matches our prior year ending fund balance. And the budget revision for that would be $2.7 million increase in our budgeted fund balance. And we typically increase transfers based on our financial policy, transfers to our Capital Outlay Fund of 2.7 million. Have any questions about that?
And you need a motion for that one.
I do.
All right, I'll move to I'm going to have the revision for the, is it 2.7?
You just need to motion to accept state budget revision number one for fiscal year 22.
I'll move a motion to accept state budget revision for the general fund. Any discussion? I'll favor say aye. Motion carries, thank you.
And the second budget revision would be for our coal severance fund. Coal Severance Fund ended the fiscal year with $195,000 in its fund balance. And we budgeted 186,000. So this is to increase the beginning fund balance for fiscal year 22 from 186,000 to 190,000. The same concept that we just made for the general fund.
Okay, Jane.
I'll move approval of fiscal year 2022 state budget revision number one for the coal severance fund.
Any discussion? All favors say aye. Motion carries, thank you.
And just so, we have a couple of new commissions that line item for 401 commission 216,000. That is the amount that we have available in the coal severance fund. We typically use that for emergency or missionary types of purchases. And the next thing I have on the agenda is continued from July 1st, 2021, review and approval of the ARPA employee putting in stipends. I did include the original memo that I had presented on July 1st as well as definitions of who is eligible, just to make sure that we're clear on what, what this, the purpose of the stipend or what the purpose of the premium pay is for. For essential employees who were exposed to COVID-19 during the pandemic. All essential workers defined by the state and by the federal government are those that are in critical infrastructure sectors who are regularly performing in-person work and interact with others that work physically, handle items, handle others. And I will open this up to the commission for discussion, table.
Yeah, Jim, I want to just say, you know, you talked about this before. And it was asked to kind of wait until all our requests came in. I feel it's very, very important that we take care of our employees. We did not give them the cola or a cola or a raise, a very decrease, I suppose, went blank here for a second. We didn't, because of, because of COVID and we didn't vote on that. We kind of tabled that decision again until December to see what this Delta variant is going to do. I, I think it's very important that we take care of our employees. They did work hard and, and with, without, without great employees here in the county. We were only as good as our employees we hire. And I think we need to take care of them, a lot of them, especially our first responders. You know, they went in homes. You know, our, our police officers, they went in and arrested people. Obviously, they caught COVID, took them home, gave them to the family. So I think we need to compensate them. This is the way to do it. And I think it's just, just a token of our appreciation for all the hard work that they do. I think your recommendation was that, I'm trying to find it here on my computer, is like, was 3,500 per follow-up? Is that?
3,000.
3,000.
3,000.
The full time.
To eligible employees, if it's going to be approved today, we would probably want to revisit the date of the effective date, I understand.
Okay.
Change on very good. We want to revisit that.
Does anybody ask any questions?
I just, well, just kind of a comment. And I agree with everything that you just said. And I know some, some staff had the luxury of working from home. So working nonetheless, where others had a bigger risk of exposure because they didn't have. So I'm just going to use ESA as an example because I use them all the time. So I'm just wondering if this should be considered on a scale, there should be a slight bump to those first responders, including elections, all people that could not physically work from home because their job demanded them to be on duty, on call, you know, whatever. Couldn't necessarily do sitting behind the desk and kind of have that guy at home and have that protection that the others were exposed to. Yes, ma'am?
We actually have very few people who exclusively work from home. It is true that we would rotate them out, that we have, you know, they, we basically have shifts. So this was your shift here in the office and then there's your, your, your home shift that you're in the office. But there were, there are a few employees, employees who did exclusively work from home. But there were very few of those who just were never in the office.
And they were excluded from that.
They were excluded from that. Oh, well, they were, okay, that's just what I wanted to check because I'm just thinking it's more like hazard paid. You know, but yeah, I agree.
And we have assessors who were going into people's homes to take measurements. But we have maintenance staff who would go and clean, you know, areas after we had positive exposure. So there are significant examples of exposure.
And your recommendation was 3,000, okay. I'm going to go ahead and move a motion to, to, to offer our, offer a $3,000 stipend to the employees who qualify for the ARP component as of today's date. That is today's date, it's August 5th, 2021.
I'll second that. For full-time employees is a retroactive premium pay.
Any discussion?
Yeah, does this complement the, the premium pay for deputies? Or we've not been in that now? Because you mentioned deputies are.
Yeah, well, this, this will pay now.
This pays them 3,000.
I included all of them.
Any other discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. The last item that I have, I did present or include in your packet a copy of all of the community requests that were received. Total is about 1.8 million. I received one change from the General City County Water Advisor Committee that's not reflected on yours. They'd like to remove the sinkhole study and increase the three-year study to 150,000. But still about $21 million in requests. We'd love this down. So I, I really just wanted to get some guidance from the commission. More specifically, I just wanted to provide the staff, myself and Stephanie, with some direction regarding which requests should be reviewed further for ARPA eligibility and potential consideration for any requests that will not be considered for additional review by the commission.
So, yes, I just, what I would like to see applied against these requests, number one is county projects. Number two is project-specific, things that don't necessarily have to be maintained beyond this money being spent because we don't know what future revenues are going to be. So that, that's kind of my two criterias that I would like to see, at least in ranking. This is first county projects that benefit the whole county. And then project-specific where we can, you know, implement and minimal or no cost for maintenance or longevity on recurring expenses.
Yeah. And, and of course, a couple of us were in training a couple of weeks ago. And obviously, these funds don't have, they don't have to be spent right away. We do have time and they have to earmark, just only earmark by 2024. That's what we learned, that's what we learned at the audit training. Yes.
So if it's a large project, you just need to make sure you have a purchase order placed.
I did see something this morning about, you know, the news channels, about the infrastructure being rolled to the state.
So, yeah. I did want to bring that, I'm going to piggyback on our questions kind of related. We did have our broadband meeting yesterday and we were kind of discussing what are our next, what do we need to do to get the vote rolling? And I feel like a little bit, it's just kind of hurry up and wait because we are waiting on this infrastructure bill. So we don't want to spend our fun here for other kind of projects. There's going to be, you know, billions of dollars that we have to address broadband. And Keith McIntosh joined that meeting yesterday to provide a comment on, you know, this, what within that bill. There may be some, you know, we talked about that Blue Ridge Tower because we have the, we're using a tower that we do not own for home. Thank you, but then so they're in, you know, for the, for the health department tower and the Blue Ridge Tower. There's a reason to do that beyond broadband, maybe if the commission wants to do that, because they give us our own tower for public safety. I do know that on the Blue Ridge Tower, we had wanted to put some extra equipment up there at one point in time. And then Jeff and I worked with North Southern and at one point, they were going to build another tower for us. But then when it got higher up, they said, no, they're not going to do that. So there is, you know, we may want to discuss the Blue Ridge Tower, which had the dual benefit of public safety and also broadband. If we, you know, if we don't get any funding from the state. I do think that that probably will go through the state of the broadband. And then the state has also set aside some of their funds for broadband. And they keep shifting the target on what speed you have to meet in order to qualify for their funding. And of course, their, the focus is unserved, likely unserved, underserved, you know. So, and then there's these art off option areas where Frontier, if there's an art off option area here in the county that just visits, front this on some areas, Frontier has most of that. And so their, their application is pending because they're taking a hard look as to whether or not Frontier can actually provide that service.
Yes, I guess one of my frustrations, and you can't do anything about this, but just put a comment, is that it is a hurry up and wait. By the time we actually start implementing, I think we'll be behind in technology.
I know, I think, I feel the same way because, and you know, yesterday I asked the question, what do we need to do? Is there anything we can do now? And the answer is yes, we could expend our funds now to, to implement the fixed point wireless on some of the towers. But I will tell you that a neighboring county wasn't able to do it because of those art off option areas. So I guess representatives from the company showed up at the state. So I guess representatives from the company showed up at the state and said, oh, this infridge is on our area. So they were not able to use their funding to do that. So I know it's complicated. It is so complicated and it is really frustrating because we have the study, we have funding to implement, it's relatively cheap to do. Yeah, we know how to fix the problem. It's a relatively cheap fix. But there's also, there are all these other external factors, including the, the other buckets of money that may be available, but also this art off option. Blue Ridge is not in the art off option area though. However, Russell said yesterday that even that tower, there, in where it did, where there are valleys, there are places where it will not reach that here. But maybe the last mile in the, in federal infrastructure bill, that might help reach those areas.
So just out of curiosity is, okay, so if we do the Blue Ridge Tower and we decide to do that out of this fund and then money's out the well.
Yeah.
And we reimburse ourselves. Reimburse ourselves from state money to that.
Typically not. Typically not. And typically you're not allowed to use several funds for grant matching.
Right.
You know what I mean? So some of our requests are saying, do you apply grant matching? We can't use several funds for grant match. I, I read somewhere on something like on email, you could, but it might be a very limited focus of what you can use that state to match.
The good thing out of it is we're not, we're not pressed to spend anything right now. And I'll, you know, I said we're going to have a shortfall this year that we can replace revenues with and with the commissioners. What's your thoughts on maybe getting a spreadsheet from Michelle, what from the request, what qualifies, what doesn't qualify? And because I know we had some requests that wouldn't qualify for the, for the federal requirements. And then maybe at a later date, we can, we can put it on the agenda and maybe discuss how we would proceed. But there's certainly, we're, we're certainly not at a rush, which is always good.
And the other issue I have is some of these projects like pedestrian sidewalks curbing and stormwater runoff, some of that would probably qualify.
Well.
But some of it won't because it's street skate. And some of that's probably going to fall under the state's new infrastructure plan.
I got one question. I can't remember. For the health department, it's a community outreach position, 95,000. Is that a permanent position they're looking to hire on board?
I, I would have to, I believe it was a permanent position. I, I think, I think it is. It's a vacant position right now. No, it's a new position. It's a new addition.
They're going to be current employees or they're going to be state employees?
Well, it'd be one of those hybrid employees because they, the employee by the health department, they follow the state rules, but also the health department employee as well. So I mean, and I may only orbit that.
Right. And I also added a request on there for the tri-state that presented to us homeless, they want to fund at homeless, so the position, so I did include that.
Well, why, why don't, if, I know it's hard to sort this because I'm making marks against things, you know, infrastructure, staffing, I don't think that's not helping. Yeah.
I think staffing would fall into the, like, it's going to be.
Right.
Right.
I'm concerned. Yes, you do. But the grant, the grant provides for replacement of positions that were eliminated.
Right.
So that when you get to a position where your revenue closes that gap, you should be okay in funding it one percent. So that really only applies to positions that were eliminated, not necessarily the new positions eliminated.
Right.
Yeah. Anyway.
We're going to talk about that later.
Yeah. But, um, yeah, did you, any deals with that?
Um, no, I just kind of want to echo Tricia on that, that I, I just thought about the funding, new positions. So maybe, maybe in September, we should start scheduling every couple of weeks work sessions to go over.
I believe so. It's a lot of requests.
It is a lot. Some work sessions to go over requests, we'll go over the county-related, county, Jefferson County Commission requests first, as they'll be given priority and then, okay.
And I do, I think I mentioned this to you, just want to fly, was, I know a lot of the municipalities have requested money for specific things and we don't even know how much they're getting or how they're using their funds yet.
I, I know how much they're getting and I did put it on the county's website. There is a website for everyone in the community to be able to view. It's the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, it's on the county's website and I did list.
Okay.
Yes, each, how much the county is receiving, how much they incorporate the towns recently. And so I believe Charleston and Ranson are each receiving over $20,000.
I'd be curious to see how they're using those funds in relation to the requests that can come to the county.
Well, and, and yeah, and that's, you know, I understand they're, they're, they're headed with rate equalization for Charles Town, but that's, that needs to be carried forward if it's truly rate equalization, not if we have these funds can do that.
And they do now. We use for debt service. So what, what do they mean by rate equalization? Are they trying to pay down their debt or are they trying, you know what I mean? So there are a lot, there are a lot of, yeah, ifs ands or buts in those projects. Just back to the stipend, I don't believe I got a payday. Would it be okay to pay that on August 13th, which would be next Friday, because employees just received their paychecks today? They'll get payroll time to do what they need to do and contact the payer.
I will, you will, you need it amended by motion.
I think, I mean, I just, you authorized it, I think that you did.
Okay.
To just direct Michelle to work with payroll figure out.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
Any other comments or questions on any of that? Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. We are running slightly ahead of schedule. Everybody will take a five-minute break, we'll come back once we're, we'll take a five-minute recess and we'll be right back.
She's self-spooken, so I'm trying to add, I was thinking, you're she.
Yes, it is. I don't know. Alternatives. I know it has a lot of alternatives.
Do.
I don't know.
He's got a couple slides.
The loud.
That's a good thing. That's a good thing. How's your mom doing?
She's all right.
Is she good?
Thanks for asking me.
I know, maybe I'll be talking with her when he was down in there.
Yeah, it's such a small world.
It's like crazy.
That's a pretty hard mistake too.
Yeah.
I'm only for dedication properties. Never go. As soon as I say, I'm going to ask Mr. Sollinger to sign if they approve them now, so I don't need to be here. I'll be checking the office.
I'll be.
There's a guy. I just want to be presumptuous about how to just sign them when they approve these requests.
They implement these times, they're just running here.
I can get these over to you and see me.
Okay.
I haven't been here for hours. I may just sit there. People flash, yes. Yes. I have brought my first. I mean, I'm. Two years old, paralysed on here, they didn't pay.
I did. I was.
Now, this is, that's what I have, $200,000 for her. Well. Wow. This one, this stuff. That's somebody get over here.
Was Claire?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, he's.
Down one of their children in the ring? How many children do you think?
It was my aunt's dog that come down everywhere.
And I was. And I was sitting, I knew he was missing, I'm hoping he was inside.
I don't think that potential, if you want to start with that, but I can.
Oh, yeah, no, I started, when you started up, you go or.
You want me to create and how you started?
Yeah, you're probably, because I don't know, I'm not going to jump over and try to touch anything.
Yeah.
We're good. Oh, good. Welcome back. We're back in session. We're going to be going to agenda item number seven. This is Roger Goodwin, County Chief County Engineer, and he also brought Ms. Burns with him as well, too. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I have three items. And the first one is Chapel View subdivision. The developer Chapel View subdivision Orchard Knowles LLC departed on their bonding agreement and failed to complete all the site improvements. As a result, the county commission called in the bond on August 12, 2010. The bond amount was $226,263, and it's placed in a bank escrow account, which is customary at the Bank of Charlestown for use toward completion of the site improvements. In February 2019, the county commission and the Chapel View subdivision HOA agreed that the HOA could move ahead on their own with managing the completion of site improvements or to speed up the process. They had hired CTO engineering from Morgantown to help them develop the scope of work, bid the work, and oversee the completion of the work. CTO engineering completed yet the scope of work, estimated quantities, provided cost estimate. We reviewed all that. CTO engineering obtained bids for the work and provided inspection and inspection services. Jefferson Asphalt Company was hired to repair and repave a cul-de-sac, replace the finishing asphalt surface course on the streets, and place stone shoulders and grade a drainage swell around the power company transformer. CTO engineering issued a letter dated June 8, 2021, confirming the work was complete, and Chapel View HOA issued a letter to us accepting the work, and that's all attached in your package. Under the agreement between Chapel View subdivision HOA and Jefferson County Commission, the county commission holds the bond funds in the Bank of Charlestown account. County commission issues payment for the work from the available funds upon receipt of approved invoices. The engineering office provided general oversight to ensure the funds are expended only for site work-related expenses under the original approval of the subdivision plat. The Chapel View subdivision HOA is requesting the following. Number one, direct payment to Jefferson Asphalt Company from the escrow bond funds in the Bank of Charlestown account to pay Jefferson Asphalt Company's invoice, number 19658, in the amount of $184,881. And number two, that the balance remaining in the bond escrow account after paying the invoices be transferred to Chapel View HOA for use by them to complete other minor improvements as they deem necessary. The amount of escrow bond funds as of June 30 was $197,753 as of the statement we got today. It's earned about $17 in interest. Less the amount of Jefferson Asphalt invoice leaves a balance of about $12,800, $900. It has been the practice in the past when we end up with a little small amount left that we transfer to the HOA. There could be an item, an additional item that needs completed in some cases, but the amount remaining in the balance isn't enough to do the work. So what we do is we just transfer it to them, let them use it as they desire for improvements and maintenance in the subdivision so that we can close out the escrow account and get it off the books and close the file out. So the engineering office recommends payment of the invoice and then transferring the total remaining balance in the bond funds escrow account to Chapel View HOA, and then closing the bond escrow account. And we have a motion there that we're asking for, and if you approve it, Ms. Burns has the two checks that she would like to get signed while she's here.
Okay, I'll go ahead and do a motion to pay Jefferson Asphalt the amount of $184,881. This is invoice number 19658, and also to transfer the remaining balance in the Bank of Charlestown's account, account number, say, 33041527, transfer that back to the Chapel View subdivision HOA, and this will then complete and close the file based to JCPC file number 03-11. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, yes, thank you.
Thank you for your very detailed explanation of a long-running issue.
I'll go ahead and sign.
We had about 10 or 12 of these where the next stretch, 2005 to 10, developers departed and walked away and left work not finished, and we called in all those bonds, and this was the last project. It's taken a long time, but finally done.
One of those was that airport subdivision that.
Sudamer.
Yeah, never really got off the ground at all.
Yeah, and we, you know, I told the the land development inspector who oversees the inspections and the bond releases and so forth, and the bond estimates, and our pricing, our cost figures to make sure that we never get in this position again, make sure that there's an incentive for the developer to keep, leave the work rather than walk away and leave us alone. That's where we are. Next one I have, the item is self-tire facilities maintenance removal and removal bond and shorty policy. In accordance with Article 4B, Section 4B.8 and 4B.9 zoning ordinance, the property owner and developer of a self-tire facility shall provide a maintenance and removal bond as a guarantee that the cell tower shall be maintained in both exterior appearance and structural soundness. The property owner and developer shall ensure that all parts of the cell tower facility shall be removed from the premises, and the land shall be restored to a condition reasonably similar to its original condition prior to the installation of the cell tower facility. What they don't want to have happen is the cell tower technology changes or something, or a company goes bankrupt and the cell tower gets abandoned, and they don't want left standing on the property, and then it's not maintained and it becomes a safety hazard. They want it removed. And this is similar to the bonding policy we discussed on solar facilities. You don't want a brownfield left behind. So removal shot consists of the removal of the tower, all structures, utilities, driveways, pavement gravel areas, fencing, any other items not present in the predeveloped condition. The site shall be graded as close to the predeveloped condition as possible and fully stabilized with a minimum 70% grass growth. Yeah, so the intent is to ensure that they do not abandon the cell tower and apartments as in place now when the cell tower facility becomes obsolete or ceases operation. And then I put in there the part of the zoning ordinance that applies to this. And the bond and shorty policy is presented to county commission for consideration of adoption of the policy. We essentially use the proposed solar farms bonding policy as the template for this. It's a very similar type of bond and reason as the solar facilities that you want to have this here. So we're asking for you to adopt that. We have a cell tower that's going through the process right now, and they're going to need to post a bond, and we will just need to have a policy in place. And then that policy, first eight or nine pages of that policy generally explains how it works. And then all the additional pages are the agreement forms. Depending on the type of shorty, there's three different types of shorty, and then the shorty forms themselves that the developer owner would sign and posting that bond and making that guarantee.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the bond that was presented in the package? Any provisions or recommendations?
I reviewed it. It looks.
All right, here, none. I'm moved to accept these draft that was submitted to us in our package.
I'll second that with a little more detail for self-tire facilities, maintenance and removal bond of the shorty policy, effective August 21, 2021.
Thank you. Is there, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries, you know. Thank you. Come on up to the hot seat, sir. Is this, if you want to introduce yourself.
I was going to let Roger. This is Randy Kepler from Greenway Engineering. I'll give you an introduction, and then Randy can do his presentation. In February 2021, Greenway Engineering, on behalf of the city of Charlestown, approached the county administrator about the city's proposed stormwater management project. The city of Charlestown obtained grant funding to design a solution to improve storm drainage and reduce flooding along Liberty Street down here below our employee parking lot. However, the design includes constructing and improvements within the Jefferson County employee parking lot. The county commission agreed to let the employee parking lot be included in the city of Charlestown's design phase of project. The engineering office was then asked to review the proposed plan and raise any issues or concerns. The county administrator, the finance director, the maintenance department director, the chief county engineer, the county planner, designer administrator, and other staff met with Greenway Engineering staff to discuss our concerns. Those concerns were addressed in a March 12, 2021 letter from Randy Kepler at Greenway Engineering. The project design, and as a result of that, they were going to make some minor changes that would satisfy our issues and concerns. So Randy Kepler is here for Greenway Engineering to make a presentation on the proposed project and inform the county commission of the purpose and the final design and how the project will affect the employee parking lot. At this time, the city of Charlestown does not appear to have funding for the construction phase of the project. So having been told by the county commission to allow the design to move forward, wanted to get you informed on what this entails. We're not asking for a commitment on construction, paying for the construction or anything. It's just an info for informational purposes. I'll let Randy take over.
Thank you, Roger. Back in the fall of 2020, the city of Charlestown and Greenway Engineering started working on an evaluation of their storm sewer system with the main focus of the concern of the area shown on the map there at the intersection of George and Liberty, and that block there at Liberty Street, that they've had some pretty consistent flooding in the area affecting local businesses and such. So we did an evaluation of this system, and as we were finishing that up, it became, we were made aware of the availability of some grant money. So the West Virginia Chesapeake Bay implementation grant, the Chesapeake Bay program, had funds left over in their three or four-year cycle. Normally, it's used for construction, but the committee agreed to put the remaining money up for also projects for design. And we were one of three groups that were awarded grant money to use for design. So the city of Charlestown contracted with Greenway to do design for improvements of Liberty Street to improve the drainage, to reduce the intensity of the flooding. A part of this grant, however, is associated with green infrastructure, with the Chesapeake Bay program, with providing green infrastructure for helping water quality and quantity for the impacts to the bay. So as a part of our design, we incorporated water quality measures. And during that process, it became apparent that the county's parking lot had a lot of impervious area and had a lot of impact to the drainage shift that was going to Liberty Street. So as Roger had mentioned, we had reached out and had gotten the county's acceptance to include and proceed with providing design. So everything that's shown now on the screen, it's just one sheet of a plan set, a construction document that we developed to show for a design of stormwater collection, stormwater treatment, and improvements of the Liberty Street block and of the county parking lot to incorporate green infrastructure and stormwater management, quantity and quality to improve the flooding conditions on Liberty Street and meet the grant requirements, providing the water quality standards for the Chesapeake Bay program. What the focus on the county employee lot, the employee parking lot right now has some inefficiencies in the parking layout and striping. So as we went through the program, we looked at ways, we kind of stepped back and looked outside of the stormwater box and looked at the traffic patterns, looked at the entrances, and looked at ways to be more efficient with parking while also providing areas for providing water quality air measures. And what we came up with is there on Liberty Street, right now it's one big entrance. We've separated it into two smaller entrances, still 24, 26 foot wide. I don't remember the exact dimension, but, you know, wide enough for what is necessary for this parking. Restrike the areas provided the brown hatches are pervious pavers. The green areas are either added grass areas for water quality infiltration, BMP, infiltration BMPs that provide or additional treatment. There's a separate sheet, and I didn't want to get into detail, but there's additional storm piping out in this area to collect all that water to get it into the stormwater infrastructure that's being proposed along Liberty Street so we can get it into the system that flows down on George and then off into the Ebbets Run, eventually the Ebbets Run of the system. Some of the things that the county engineering group, or I guess the review group, the county review group requested was, and Roger, you have to help me, there's a building out on Washington Street that is in need of demolition.
Yeah, that would be right in the middle there where it shows the kind of the black dot, the square dot, the gray in there, the sidewalk, and then the green grass area. That's the, that's the building next door.
Sweet, you called it the mason, wasn't it?
Did I? So, so we talked about if you were going to ever demolish that, it would make sense that if you're going to do work in a parking lot, that you get that building out of there at that time.
Right.
So we had them show the building is removed and then what they would propose to do with that area.
So, yeah, that's basically the point. So we took the, we showed the building as being removed and basically made it a little pocket park with some walking trails. Gives you a green space access to Washington Street from the parking lot and provides you ADA access to some now compliantly sized handicap parking spaces. Everything else stayed pretty much the same as far as road alignment, drive aisle, two-way, all that kind of thing. It's still one way back into the 45 degree angle parking spaces. But that's about the extent of it. We did do some cost estimates on this to get an idea of what costs were going to be. And the whole, the whole package, a lock, stock, and barrel comes in at about 1.3 million. So split that about half. It's about 700 for Liberty and 700 for the parking lot. And that's the engineer's estimate. Obviously, that'll change based on market and contractor rates and all that kind of thing. And as Roger had mentioned, at the present time, the city of Charlestown had the money through the grant program for the design of this parking lot and this street improvement, but not for construction. So I think they had a little bit of match money for the design, but right now there's nothing in their budget for construction of this. Of course, at the time this was done, there wasn't all of the discussion about an infrastructure build. So I don't know how that changes anything at this point. But that's always on the table, I guess, for both sides.
Yeah.
But as far as I'm aware, the intent of the city of Charlestown is for construction to be by both NDS. They believe they would be responsible for the Liberty Street improvements. Plus, I believe they said a portion of the improvements of the parking lot, which would include the entrance shift and the basically the yellow areas of the long sidewalk along Liberty Street, to make that tie together. But at this point, they think it would be appropriate for the county to be responsible for the pavement of rest of the, for construction. Obviously, that's all up for discussion, and I'll step back and I'm part of that.
But we can figure out what's going to happen with this.
Sure. So that's it in a nutshell. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything to discuss.
This, does anybody have any questions for Randy? I guess, obviously, it's designed, what's the goal for Charlestown? You know, they, I would say, everything's, when you want to have it built, yes, probably answered yesterday, but did they have any timeframes that they're kind of trying to live up to or stick by?
I don't believe there's any timeframe that's been written down or any kind of guideline from the city council or anything like that. I do know that the city has concerns of flooding along Liberty Street. And so I would say it's one of their priorities that as soon as they can find funding, they're going to put money to it to help with that flooding issue. So sooner rather than later, I don't think it's a 10-year program. I think it's going to be sooner than that. It's just my, my opinion. I don't know exactly how many people. Does anybody have any?
Mr. Kepler. So I'm sure you've been on the site and see the significant dip we have in the parking lot. Is that a concern because we've worked on fixing that and it still reappears about every five years? So, you know, some of us, at times, at least I have, wondered what was causing that. And I know we've reviewed, removed fuel tanks.
Okay.
Oil-based fuel tanks. I don't think it's quite in that area.
Sure. Sure. There has not been any kind of geotechnical evaluation of the parking lot or the Liberty Street. It's been surface improvements and piping.
Right.
Surely, that can be something that can be evaluated. Get a geotech on sites and borings and do some evaluation. I would agree, if there's county concerns of certain areas in the parking lot, that would be well worth the time to take an evaluation, especially if you decide that that's something that you want to get moving on. Prior to doing any of this work, I would definitely look into it.
Is there any way I can get a digital copy of that?
All right. Does anybody else have any further questions?
Yeah, I just have one quick. So the city of Charlestown hasn't seen this?
No, they haven't. Yeah, the city of Charlestown, as well as Jefferson County, have gone through the review process. They've all seen the plan set. They've all provided comments, and we've done our best to address those comments.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you all. Thank you very much.
We were basically running ahead of schedule about 20 minutes. I think we can jump into the agenda item number 10. Thanks. Or do you have any other recommendation?
Yeah, agenda item number 10. For agenda item number 10.
You want to go ahead and do that?
He does.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we were running a little bit ahead of schedule.
I didn't know whether you wanted to jump ahead for Cheryl, but it's not going to take that long. Okay, all right.
And then we can move. I'm just trying to figure out what way to fit in if the 11:30, 5, it's like so.
Okay, all right. Yeah, go ahead and do that. Do you want me to give just like a little brief overview?
Sure.
So in your packet, you have a revised draft impact fee report, and that is based upon excluding everything but the high school fee. And also, it took out sports facility, the administrative facility. And so that is what that revised report included, and that was being on the discussion.
And it also took out the administrative facility.
Yes, it's.
Okay. I have a question. Do you know how much money over the years, should have been prior to now, how much we collected for the commercial impact fee?
Very low.
Yeah.
It's very low because we have set it at 0.99%. So there, I mean, we basically set it to zero.
Yeah.
So we collected very little for the. Because during the reception, we were trying to attract business. So we said, okay, well, if we set this fee at basically nothing. So we set it as low as we could without getting rid of it.
Yeah.
So I can get you those numbers if you give me a second.
Oh, no, that's fine. My thoughts are, you know, it's, we paid for this study, and they do a lot of calculations, and we already collected anything from this. I'll get to that later, but I was just curious. Okay. All right. Well, obviously, I looked over this report study pretty hard, and as Stephanie said, the studies coming back where we shouldn't, we were not, they're not recommending we collect impact fees for elementary or middle school or certain facilities. And basically, the reason, the reason behind that is because of the school enrollment trend. Stephanie has up there now the current enrollment trend, and you can certainly see the drop from 20, it's like 2016. We had dropped significantly in the last six, five or six years. And that's, that's one of the reasons that certainly we're not seeing an increase in school enrollment. Can you, can you show us the other slide with the classroom sizes? Do you have that one? Any chance? A couple weeks ago.
So this is, I have, I put the.
Okay, yeah.
This is the classroom size down here.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay. Oh, it's at the bottom, very bottom. Okay, all right, here we go. Now, you're right. You had it. You had it. So, now, there we go. Okay, so basically, what this, what this group is recommending is that we, we continue to collect impact fees for high school, for the high school only. And you can look at the, so this is last year. So this is obviously just move everybody up one grade from now. So this year in ninth grade, we're going to have, oh, excuse me, ninth, ninth grade and 11th grade, that's going to be our largest class sizes, so 733 and 736. Obviously, we had a small class graduate last year, it was 617. And then if you go back to the bottom of the scale, coming up, you have a lot of small class sizes in elementary, and we don't, really don't have any 700-sized classes coming into high school. Tisha Bice is recommending that we collect a high. Tisher Bice is recommending that we collect a high school impact fee. However, those kids are going to graduate in four years. And we don't have, we don't have a, a large class coming up to backfield it. And as you know, in four years, you couldn't even come up with a plan to build a school or add on to a school in four years. Those kids are going to be gone. I've also did some research that we currently have $17 million in impact fee sitting in an account now that can be used for any, any additions that would qualify. So that's kind of sitting there in, in our impact fee account. I also understand that impact fees are, if they don't spend it, that, that could be a problem as well. Now, one of the, one of the comments from the last public hearing was we should collect impact fees because Tisher Bice says we're going to have an increase in students. Do you have, did I say that? Seven? All right. But I said, the, the nice thing about hiring the same company to do the report and Tisher Bice, we, the county hired them back in 2015. And their projection in school growth in five years was 803 students. And, and the, the actual projection in five years for 15 to 20 was a negative 124. So obviously, they're, they're projecting growth and, and it's not really happening. And that was just one person's comment in the last report was because they said there's going to be growth in schools, we should just continue collecting it. But the data doesn't support that. I am, I, I, I am not totally convinced that we should convince, we should continue collecting impact fees for the schools. I am very convinced that we, and I lost my page here, we continue collecting for fire EMS and all the other entities. So there we go. I got to bring it back up. So I guess what, what I would like to do, but, or excuse me, their recommendation for a single-family house is 4539. That's collecting at 100%. The school portion of that is 2920. And then multi-family, the recommendation is 2610. And that's 2,610, excuse me. And the school portion of that is $1,450. What I would like to do is, I will move a motion for discussion as well, too. I would like, I would recommend we don't collect the school portion of it because I don't think the data we currently have and the school enrollment is, is not increasing and it's declining. And I think we should only, only collect all, we only collect $1,649 for a single family. And we collect 1,160 for a multi-family. And basically, those numbers are derived from taking out the school portion from the recommended fees. And that would be my motion on the fourth.
A second for discussion. For staff, does state code require us to collect from schools?
You are not required to collect any category of fee. You know, that's up to the, to the commission. I will say that if you, it's more difficult to get a good feedback if you completely eliminate it. Which is why we, for commercial, we set it at 99.9% because as your county gets bigger, it's hard to hit that, the growth that's required to implement impact fees. But once you qualify as a great county, so you qualified as a great county back in 2004.
Right.
When we first implemented the fees. And once you hit great county status, you always have great county status under the, the convention. But as the county gets bigger, you have to grow more in order to meet that percentage.
I think it's 3%.
Yeah, I think it is 3%, but I'm not sure. I could look it up real quick. I don't remember. But there is a percentage that you have to reach. So if you completely revoke this school impact fee and grab rid of it, then if you want, if you ever wanted to implement it again, you would have to qualify again to something like that, I think. And I don't want to step on any of the seats here, which I feel maybe I already have. So.
I think that's right. I think.
And that's why we did, when we, when we decided that we really wanted to reduce the commercial fee, we set it at 99.9% versus just completely eliminating the commercial.
Okay. I just want to make sure we weren't going to be in conflict with the state code.
No, there's, I mean, I believe that you have permission to collect for a variety of county services. The first one we ever implemented was schools because that was really just for impact fees back in 2004. Because we had a, we were called high school. We needed a second high school. And that's why the county commission did it at the time. But there, I don't think there's any like directive or standing requirement that you continue to collect these for.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions or discussion?
Yes, I, I think it would be very short-sighted to remove schools entirely. I think we need to leave it in there because I'm not saying what amount at this time, but we need to have it in there because these things can turn around. And we are seeing amazing growth right now. And, you know, a lot of these people that move into new homes have kids, school-aged kids. And these homes are being built really fast right now. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but it's going to impact our school system. And, you know, we have to have these recalculated every five years or?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So I'm thinking the numbers will, I feel the numbers will reflect growth, growth in the school system despite the the dip we have right now. And it's very short-sighted to remove schools. I, I go for 50% of the school fees if everybody thinks they should be cut entirely. I just don't think that is a wise decision for a five-year impact. You know, I think you all know that there's a lot of new houses coming, townhouses and so forth. And even more so with COVID, more people living now.
Well, I guess one comment I would make, because I know we've looked at the numbers before and it was surprising to me, but the numbers were clear that we are seeing an increase in people moving here. But while there's more people moving, the enrollment is going down for the schools. And I also would be interested, I know with the Hope Scholarship coming in, I think that that's another thing where our public school enrollment, I think probably will be affected by that. And I just don't feel that the data that we have is reflective of continuing the fee.
I didn't hear what you said. Something about a scholarship?
The Hope Scholarship? I don't know if you're familiar with that.
It, it provides a, basically a segment for people to enroll students in private school.
Oh, yeah, or homeschool. So I think that's not being implemented this year, but following school year. So I think that's going to give parents a lot more choice in their children's education. And we currently have declining enrollment. And I think with the interaction of that, that could impact our enrollment as well.
Well, and I think the COVID numbers are affecting enrollment, too, because I know a lot of parents have opted out for other, you know, homeschooling or whatever they needed to do due to health concerns, not anything to do with the school system. They just needed to stay out.
And I think combining basically Claire's point, your point, his parents were kind of forced to do the homeschool, the virtual learning. And now they're going to get money to continue, you know, a stipend to continue that. I don't see them willingly on the brink of maybe, you know, another shutdown or requirements or whatever, they may just continue to do that virtual. So I, I tend to agree with, with Claire that I see that those enrollment numbers maybe dropping even more as those things become available.
Prior to COVID, it was, it was dropping without.
Well, and I know that, but then I don't think it's such a significant drop that you should cut the funding entirely. That's my point. And this has got to last for five years.
Yeah, well, the, well, the problem, the problem would, it would be if we collect the money, then if they cannot use it, and Nathan, help me out here. Does, is there a certain set time they have to collect this fee? And if they don't use it, they have to pay it back to the constituents or the people or?
There, there is a time.
There's a time they have to use it. So we collected. Yeah, I, I thought there was. So we might, and, and right now, there's currently $17 million in this fund that, and, and they, and technically, they cannot use this, these fees to build these two new elementary schools.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, because they're. Yeah, replace them. Yes, ma'am. And, but if, if we remove it, if we take schools all the way off the charts here, are you, Nathan, are you saying we can't add them later?
Well, it'd be hard to qualify.
The qualifying, there's like, it's like, it's like 1% of years. It's a growth in the county is the justification for the end there.
But if we, if we were to add, put them for $1, we're not taking them.
That's what I was going to ask. Is their interest set near zero instead of removing it completely?
Yeah, you're not taking them off, but let me ask you this. Could we defer the final decision on this and address a couple of issues in executive session when I go, when we go to my matters?
Yeah, we can do that.
And then we'll. And I'm just saying, the impact fee under 728, the impact fee received shall be suspended for six years of receiving my services.
So they have six years to spend it. Okay. All right. Yeah, because, all right, if you want to be, so you want to talk about this? Okay, we'll do that.
But do you want to table the motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and table it. I'll move the table's motion and, and receive legal advice.
Since, you know, we tend to just go into executive session one time, we can do that.
Sure.
For safety.
I second the motion to table.
All right. Motion carries. All right. We'll just move on to library meeting room. Is that, is that any quick, like five minutes?
It's just a request for to use the meeting room on November 27th, 2021, 3 to 5 p.m. to start updating the, the maps.
Or what management? Yes. Okay. I'll move, we approve the use of the library meeting room Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021, 3 to 5 for female mapping engineers in the West Virginia Division of Emergency Management Use.
I'm sorry. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye? Post. Motion carries. All right. It is now 11:32. We have three minutes before public comment. I don't think there's anything we can take care of. Is there any, anybody signed up for public comment?
I already watched one person.
All right.
Christine Marshall.
Okay.
You can go ahead and take her.
Sure. I, I kind of figured, well, they'll take, Mr. Flag.
Um, if there's anyone online who would like to make public comment, you just can raise your hand. If there's anyone else who wants to make public comment, you can either send me a message or you can raise, use, raise your hand back on. So our first person is Christine Marshall. Miss Marshall, you see that?
Yes.
Okay. And, and we have a timer.
Thank you. I want to express my thoughts on reducing impact fees directed to the school, towards the school system. Over the last several years, I have attended many county and city meetings. In the last few years, there has been tremendous increase in approvals for housing units. Thousands of homes have been approved in Jefferson County. And just this week, it was noted that the Charlestown City Council meeting, the Dan Bryant's property in Charlestown expects to build an additional 3,200 homes. A natural extension of these additional homes in Jefferson County is the need for schools, good quality schools that parents expect and communities need. In the last election, it was shown that current taxpayers overwhelmingly support schools. But it should not be noted that those taxpayers do not want to shoulder the tax burden of growth without contributions by developers. Impact fees by developers help support the basic capital improvements of new growth. Extra taxes paid through voter-approved initiatives raise the quality of the school systems. If the county commission wants to attract new residents and businesses, one of the best ways is to support quality education. Parents want their children to have a good future through a quality education. And employers, employers need a well-educated workforce. When the county commission does not support schools, and the losers are the children, the employers, and the community at whole. We, we heard today that building permits are up exponentially. And, and we need to support schools. They're all, all of the proposed thousands of units are not going to, those parents are not going to want to send their kids to private school or homeschool. Some of them will, but we're, we're talking about exponential growth in the county right now. And I would also encourage you to increase contributions by commercial and industrial businesses so that other vital community needs are met like fire and EMS and police. Please don't eliminate impact fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on live?
Do you want to speak, anyone else?
I didn't, they, go ahead, sir. The floor is yours. Oh, the time's up. I will see you in court anyway. Big tab, Jefferson County resident, taxpayer since I was five years old. The infrastructure here is from me and my parents. And since 1636. And you did not post the notice, elaborate, what you require, which was under the case 13C432, which someone called me in that proceedings, Mr. Flag. So with that said, you're in violation. The other violation is that public comment is to be at the beginning. Even your mission statement says as much. Did you value the public comment? But you don't. Yeah, we've been in here for, what, hour and a half? And you had no public comment. I submitted mine electronically before you started. The mission is brought up broadband versus satellite. Myself and Danny Lutz met with the governor two years ago. Satellites are available. $300, $300 million would put us in the state-of-the-art satellite system. The satellites are here, available and can be done. That's $6 million per county. Then you could sell time on that satellite and recover all your money by other uses of Kentucky, Virginia, Maryland, Pennsylvania. At no cost to the public to have a phone, a cell phone or satellite. State of the art, available right now. Been talking to the governor's office for two years, that was in person. The reason why it hasn't happened is because, two, donated money, campaigns. Another issue that has come up is on your impact fees. Impact fees should have been done 50 years ago instead of only 10 or 15. Reduce the schools. Don't take them clear out. They'll need it at some point. But what is needed is fire and rescue. You put a budget. I had a request to meet with you guys on July 15th, refused. The budget sheet shows that you approved $1.4 million for fire. You're only spending $490,000. It's in the paper. ESA had a budget for $3 million, actually receiving this period, 3.9 million. I don't know where that came from. Thank you, sir. Did you submit your comments right? I've already submitted, but you, you guys need to take care of fire and stuff. Don't reduce them out. Change it up. Needs to be paid. Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody else?
All right, do we have anybody else? On the line?
Do not see anyone else on the.
All right, well, there's objections, we'll close public comment. Uh, we'll move to one to county administrators' report.
No, I'm not trying to walk on step that the first issue is related to the solar litigation regarding the solar amendment. And I would I just say that the the minutes from the meeting are mainly not as detailed as as they could be. And there was an issue that came up in the litigation regarding the specifics of the approval of the solar ordinance by the commission. We reviewed the video. The commission did specifically approve the solar ordinance amendment to the the design amendments. It's use all the magic words that the statute requires. But some of those words were not written down in the minutes. I think there was a technical difficulty. Maybe created a problem in getting the exact words, but we found the video. And we do have the exact words. And so for the purposes of the litigation involving the solar amendment, I would just ask the commission to amend the minutes to conform with the actual language that is in the.
Okay, can we, can we play that here? That recording from April twelfth? And and the. Yeah, I don't know if you've got it kind of locked down to.
I think we're good.
Because I'm, I'm sure nobody on this screen remembers exactly what was said on April twelve.
Might have been part of the problem again.
Yeah.
We do, we do have a clear copy.
Yes, I mean, no, it is clear. It's because it's the.
It's the.
Yeah, they didn't move. But thank you for playing that, that does, showing itself.
I will say that I did have to mute because the computer so the public could not hear it, but the video is available on our website. It's April twelfth, twenty twenty one. You can go and listen to it at the minute twelve mark if anyone is interested in listening to the to the video. Because in order to get it to play for you, I had to mute this computer that it's broadcasting it to the public.
Okay.
So I do want to say that that if you are interested in seeing the video, it is on our website. And you can go to the minute twelve mark to view the motion that we are amending the minutes to reflect the motion of exception.
Okay, um, sounds good. I would, I would just go ahead and move the motion to to amend the minutes to reflect the words of former Commissioner Compton. And his to to have all the remarks added into this motion. And I couldn't write them all down, but the, that it was consistent with the comp plan. And there will have been major changes, so we could add all that exactly as he had it worded. That's my motion.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. You can answer. Thank you. All right. Letter self support. For the Jefferson County Health. Is that you, Nathan, or?
Okay.
That's, that's.
This is a request from the Health Department. I have done this previously. When we hired a sanitaryian, we're having difficulty getting sanitaryians who are willing to work for the salary that the state says we should be paying for that. It's just to let you know that salary is lower than we start out our administrative assistance. And it requires a bachelor of science degree in biology or some sort of. And I think the starting salary is twenty five thousand dollars. So, yes.
That's a date salary.
So at that time, and I believe Commissioner Compton, the president of the commission, I wrapped a letter for his signature. I can sign it or you can ask the Commissioner Sullivan, if you want to, basically providing a copy of our of our pay scale and putting it in perspective for the state to say we increased the request for increased salaries for our for the Jefferson County Health Department employees so that it is consistent with the cost of living here. At that time, they did approve the request for an increased salary for a sanitaryian. And that sanitaryian is still currently employed here, so it works. So they've asked if I would do the same thing again. I think that on maybe yesterday, the request was due to the state to request for the, for them to make the request for the increased salaries. And this would just be able to that support that supports that request that they made.
I mean, the, the Health Department.
Then the Health Department, I'm sorry. When I say, when I say they, I mean the Health Department. Just on a side note, I have been informed. I don't have anything in writing, but I have been informed that there is a pay study at the state. So they have done a locality pay study. They know that the salaries are low here for state employees as compared to some of the other counties where the cost of living is much lower. But, you know, there has always been opposition to implementing a locality pay scale. You can also look at the federal pay scale. We included the D.C. metro statistical area. Uh, for the federal scale, there's about a thirty percent bump in the base pay, which is where most of the state of West Virginia falls in that base pay category. So if you want me to write a letter, I told the Health Department I could not do it without you all. I couldn't do it on your behalf without you telling me to do it. But if you would like me to do that, I'd be happy to draft a letter, just rework the one that I wrote, I believe in twenty seventeen. And and send it off to the state to say, hey, we support this request. These salaries are pretty low in comparison to our pay scale.
Yeah, I I'll move to support a letter, a letter of support sent to the West Virginia Division of Personal Personnel, excuse me, supporting the Health Department request for increased salaries.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just reiterate, we're part of the metro D.C. area and what, you know, that impacts to. Not besides our only county scale, pay scale, but, you know, everything else.
We're not only that. We're, we border one of the richest counties in the country.
Right.
Which is that, and and this is, this is a common problem here with our teachers or sanitarians and.
Stakes.
Stakes.
Stakes, yeah.
Pretty much everybody, they jump across the board.
Yeah. Our median income should be, be much higher than, you know, as to the rest of the state because we are part of that D.C. metro area and the people that.
And it's more.
Yeah.
Yes, you're right. Yeah, I mean, you, you can, you did one pretty good down southern part of the state on, on some of these salaries, but up here it's pretty tough.
I remember when my dad used to visit me in college, he'd be like, I should buy a house here. It was in the Wakefield thing. If you went right outside the Morgantown area, how much cheaper it was than, you know, this year. And that was.
It is. All right, um, any other discussion? Any here, none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You can answer. We don't have any reports, so the county complex. And then I guess everything else, if I'm correct. Let me see. That's done. But I, I, Nathan, it's the Nathan Cochrane Hour. Or ten minutes. How about that? Do you, do you have to go? Obviously, there's a couple of things we have to do in executive session on. You want to go ahead and fire those off and we'll go talk about what we get open in our open meetings or, and we'll go in executive session or what?
Sure, I, on my item, number one, I don't really have any further reports at this time where we ended up some reports, feedback from the expert that we are consulting. Uh, number two, I would just say that the, the case is still in the court. It is very close to having some decisions made on it. And I, in executive session, I'm going to give you just a little tiny further bit of legal advice on that. And then on my item number three, I need to discuss the cable franchise agreement. And I have lined up ready to go, our legal counsel from Washington, who would give you some legal advice about where we are on that contractual negotiation. And it's been sidetracked for a bit because of COVID and because of also some legal cases that have been going on that affected some of the contract issues. So I would recommend that we go into executive session regarding my point number two, my point number three, and also with the issue relating to the, to the impact fees that we were discussing. I would provide you some legal advice on that.
And twelve.
And then I would also note that there is a personnel matter which can be dealt with in executive session unless the employee requests it. We've done an open session in some cases. And do we have a request that we, if you heard a request from the employee that we have an open session?
Yeah.
To my knowledge, the employee has made that request about that.
Has he been informed of that option?
I, we informed him today.
Yes, so he asked, he saw, I did not inform him that they, I didn't want to, but he did see the item on the end and that he contacted me. And then today he asked if he had a right to be present and then.
And I directed, I directed her to, to inform him that he had a right to be present. In most cases, he, he could ask for it to be in an open session.
Right, I know, I know that.
And so.
And I don't even know who the employee is.
She's been, she's been communicating. She, I believe, communicated my message to him. And I do not believe that he's.
It's still here. So at around eleven twelve, he asked if he would be eligible to be in the executive session. I said it depends on the topic. It's possibly maybe. And I just told him he'll have to let me know. Maybe like two minutes ago.
Okay, all right. All right, well, I'm, I'm moving that we go and move into executive session to discuss under Nathan Cochrane. His agenda item number two, his agenda item under two, two or three. And also we discussed in executive session under new business, agenda item number ten and number twelve. Uh, we're going into executive session to, to receive legal advice on all four of these matters. Remember, for my. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I'm going to vote against this because I feel that this personnel matter, there should be a follow-up phone call and say, we're on this right now, the agenda, since there's not a time certain. And make sure what the employee wants to do.
I think it's a, I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable request to call. And 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 then maybe you want to call now or just, we don't want to.
I'll get you into exec.
Let's go to the executive.
Go into executive session while you guys are doing the others. So I'll give them a call if he wants an open session or if he wants to be in the executive session, then you.
Yeah.
I'm going to amend my motion to go into the next session under agenda, agenda items number two and three under Mr. Cochrane and under new business, under, under agenda item number ten. Uh, my, uh, also.
And twelve.
And twelve, but we will call the, the the, call the employee under agenda item number twelve, see if he wants to be open or closed session.
Okay.
All right, then I have a second.
Second.
Second, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to come out in executive session.
I get it. We have a motion and a second. Come on, the next session, ready to discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now out in executive session. On item number 12, New Business Personnel Matters Director of Communications. I'm going to move the motion to instruct Stephanie to study the organizational structure of the Emergency Communication Center and find leadership training.
Thank you.
The motion, second, is any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you can answer. All right, we're going to roll back to new business discussion and draft revised impact fee report under new business. Earlier, I made a motion to model the impact, the new impact fee, to reflect not collecting the schools because of the bill was necessary. So like, we don't have the data here to really, that requires, I don't see it requires, but the data doesn't support for the school growth in this county because the school growth has been, enrollment has been declining over the last five years. I do believe that we should keep an eye on that. I understand that there are some new housing developments coming along here and something we need to keep our finger on the pulse, but right now, I don't believe that the data supports it. So I want to just move back to my original motion. My original motion was to have a new impact fee of $1,649 for a single family resident and $1,160 for a multi-family resident. Basically, the recommended fee for a single family was $4,539. These fees, well, that's just a single family basis. Essentially, what I have done on this is removed the portion for the schools, which is $2,920 for a single family, and I've removed the portion of the schools was $1,450 from the recommended $2,610 of multifamily. So that would be my motion for that, for this portion of the impact fee. Do I have a second?
Second. I'm going to add that you provide effective date of at least two weeks out from today with the impact fee staff time to update the calculation tables.
Okay.
And everything that they need to do to administer. They did ask for at least two weeks.
Okay. So how about the effective date start on Monday, August 23rd? Would that be fair enough?
Yes, that's.
So we almost started on a Friday? Or you almost started on Friday?
Yeah. Well, now, let's do it on, let's start on a Monday.
Monday, yes, we start, start on August 23rd. Okay? So the effective date would be August 23rd. Is there any discussion?
It's, do we want to, we're removing the education, we're not moving it to like 0.1% where it should be, right?
No, because we can, we can add that back in. Are you, are you?
It's questionable.
All right. How about we do this? Why don't we leave, I'll redo my motion, that's.
Why don't you withdraw that and make a new one?
I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
I've got to amend my motion. But I'll amend my motion to have the impact fee, the impact fee for a single family residence, $1,650, that gives the schools $1. And for a single family and a multi-family, I'll amend my motion to include that to be $1,161. The money collected for schools will be $1. So the recommended, recommended for single families is $2,920. We're going to collect $1 for that one, and that recommended for the multi-family is $1,450. We'll collect $1, so we'll leave it on the charts so we can obviously, yeah, keep our pulse on the impact fee for a later date. That would be my amended motion. All right. Is there any discussion?
You need a second.
And then we second it, sorry. It's been a long day.
Yeah.
Is there any, do we have any discussion?
Obviously, I'm not going to support that. Very short sighted. You know, by the time we get the data in, another year has gone by and, you know, to try to retroactively come up with funding, capital expenses, it's, it's, it's just too short sighted to me. These new figures that the consultant reworked, I think are much more realistic, took out the athletic fields and some of the admin stuff, and that's, that's where I was going. And I'm glad to see that they have been lowered to what I feel is a very reasonable rate. So I will not be voting for the motion on the floor.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion carries for the one. Also, on the impact fees, we have collected virtually zero for commercial. And this study, obviously, they did a lot of work on commercial and studied commercial development in the county, and this fee, this, this study is very expensive, and we're not collecting very little of any type of fees for commercial. I also want to put a motion on the floor to not, it's not to collect any commercial impact fees moving forward. Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion. So you're talking about removing it or leaving it how it is now?
No, I'm saying removing it totally because we're not, we're very, we're collecting very little money for commercial impacts. And, and the last thing, if we have any commercial growth in the county, certainly, it's going to pay us back tenfold of, I would say, cost money for single family residents here in the county. The, you know, you have a industry that comes in that wants to build here, they're going to hire people, there's, there's going to be money that's being put back into the, to the economy here, and I don't think we should, I don't, I think we need to be a little bit more business friendly and not, not collecting anything. We're, it's a very small fee now, so I think we should just do away with the fee total.
So I just have a question is, is the distribution structure the same with the commercial as it is the residential?
It's by square foot, per thousand.
No, but two fold.
Oh.
No.
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 Okay.
They, they pay the bulk of your fire EMS.
Yeah.
Sheriff because they are receiving those services, but they don't really receive services from the school.
Okay.
So they don't pay.
Well, and it makes sense to me, I just had to ask the question because it wasn't clear since we haven't collected anywhere that's going.
And what they're at like point, just.
Real estate parks and rec.
Essentially, what they did years ago, they, they moved it down to 0.1% or whatever, whatever.
Half a percent.
Yeah, it's a half a percent just to leave it on air to, in case everyone wanted to implement it. I don't, I don't see that we would ever need to implement an impact on a business to come into Jefferson County. I think, I think, I think that the tiers are more than a little attractive, and, you know, working on the development, you know, part of the development for years, you know, it's very competitive out there when we're trying to attract people to Jefferson County or West Virginia for that matter. So I think it's just one, one last thing we have to work it out.
No. Well, obviously, I'm going to, maybe not obviously, I'm going to vote against your motion. It will have an impact on EMS funding and also law enforcement. So those are two areas where we're always looking for ways to bolster their bottom line, to provide services to our citizens. So at that reduced rate, I think that's very reasonable for any business to pay coming to Jefferson County, anywhere else, except maybe in the rest of West Virginia, may be paying some fees upfront. So I will not be supporting that motion because you're hurting EMS and law enforcement specifically.
I will, I will humbly disagree because the, the most recent motion that we passed with the ENT, Ian, let me pull this up here, EMS on a single family residence was $52 per single family. If now this new motion that will take effect in two weeks, they will be collecting $100, so almost double. Law enforcement previously was collecting $176, and now they're going to be collecting $531. And Parks and Rec, they were previously collecting $481, and now they're going to be collecting $946. So I humble disagree with you that we're hurting them actually because we increased those fees on the single families, that's going to far make up from collecting any commercial impact fees.
I, I understand that, but that won't increase the total amount of their fees for commercial. I think it's very reasonable what's here for commercial, and I'm, I don't want to leave any funding support for these critical services that we provide to our citizens under you to block.
I understand. Okay. Earlier, are there any other discussions? Here are none, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor of the motion, please signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries for the one. I don't think we have anything else on our agenda. The correspondence, we don't have anything. Does anybody have, does anybody have any updates for any boards you want to mention that you're on? As far as anybody, I know we've been going down along, okay. All right, if there are no objections, we're adjourned. Thank you.